For. Call it the regular. It'll be the CrP and Park District on this Wednesday, July nineteen twenty twenty three. Yeah.
Thank you. To lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome the Department of Communications and Marketing Analyst Shelby Golden.
I pledge allegiance to the law. Hi.
So I have the honor of welcoming, introducing, really for welcoming at this point. Shelby Golden is our current Communications and Marketing Analyst. She has been with CRPD for almost three years now. Time flies. Shelby has been instrumental in increasing CRPD's presence within the community and has strengthened our brand identity. Recently Shelby and her staff spearheaded the Who We Are campaign and received statewide recognition through an award of excellence from CPRS. Last month she graduated from the Leadership Branch of Portova as part of Class Sixteen. When she isn't at work Shelby enjoys spending time outdoors with her husband and her dog Charlie. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Shelby for all of her hard work and are moving forward with putting our CRPD brand out there in a way that's really connecting with our community. So thank you.
Standing action item.
Thank you. This is the portion of the meeting where we consider any requests for AB two four four nine absences and we have none. So no action taken.
Sweet. All right. And we'll move on to roll call.
Thank you. We received advanced notification that Director Mattis would be late this evening. Director Langin.
Here.
Here.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Yeah.
Chair Yearwood.
Here. All right. I had to be comment by the public on non agenda items.
Thank you. Just reporting out that we currently have no community members on the Zoom. Members of the public may address the board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Is a violation of state law for the board to discuss or take action on non agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I have no requests.
Thank you. All right. I guess we'll move on to Steve consent calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on items prior to approval of the consent calendar. This evening we have fourteen items for your consideration.
Thank you. All right. Does anyone see in the public with that? Anyone on the board have any questions? Any here? This is E one through C fourteen. All right. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Sure. Or would I like to motion that we approve items C one through C fourteen, the consent calendars?
All right. Thank you. Motion by Vice Chair Danzel. Second.
Second.
Second by Director Langin. Roll call good.
Director Langin.
Aye.
Secretary Sloan.
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel.
Aye.
Chair Yearwood.
Aye.
And Director Mattis is absent.
All right. We move on to presentations.
Thank you. Item D one is a presentation by California American Water on a water well site proposal at White Rock Community Park. This is an informative presentation only. No action to be taken by the Board of Directors at this time. And I'll turn it over to Park Planning and Development Manager Laura Taylor to do the introduction.
Good evening Chair Yearwood. A member of the board. It's my pleasure to introduce two of our colleagues that work for CalAM or Water District, California American Water. And that is a local water municipality that serves the area around the White Rock Community Park. We have Jacob Rowe in the audience and Nicole Baxter. Jacob is the project manager for CalAM over this project. And he approached the district in October of twenty twenty two about finding a suitable site for the replacement well in the White Rock neighborhood. CRPD staff met onsite with CalAM to provide input on their proposal. And Jacob and his colleague Nicole, they are here to answer any questions that you might have tonight. As Danielle said, it's not an action item, but we would like to know if the board has any questions or comments that we should be considering. Prior the team to final approval for your approval at a future board meeting. The future board item will likely be the board's consideration of an infrastructure easement agreement between CalAM and CRPD. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jacob Rowe. Mara. And what how do I think this thing is going to stay up there?
Thank you all very much. I appreciate all the time here today. I am Jacob Rowe with California American Water. I am a senior project engineer. And I manage the well replacement program here in Oregon Desert. Across Oregon Desert, manage about one hundred and sixty wells across seventy system. And a huge part of the industry project we work on is replacement facilities pretty good as well. I'm here not only as a representative of CalAM, I am also a resident of the city of Rancho and a frequent visitor of Lincoln Village Park. That is my local park around the corner. So the project is not just something that serves the company we're for, but I'm also a resident and client, I guess, of CRPD. So to get started, I'm going to go through a little bit of background information on California American Water and why we're here today. What we do is serve water to the community. It's something that is oddly important every day. You got to feed water to showers, water parks that are in twenty twelve, California put together the Human Rights to Water Act that recognizes that every human being has a right to stay clean for portable and accessible water. So I am one of the many employees of California American Water that work behind scenes every single day and do the meeting these needs. And we're up against an aging infrastructure project as well as the entire country. So we have aging facilities everywhere that we're looking to replace as we continue to need to provide services and as we reinvest our systems, we look for opportunities to improve them and increase the energy supply. So California American Water is one of the largest water companies in California. We serve approximately seven hundred thousand customers and have over three hundred employees on staff. We invest almost a hundred and ten million dollars annually to maintain the structure. And all that's to say that this is exactly what we do. It's our jobs to do this. We're pretty good at like thing. And so we're doing this across the country or across the state. And you're just one of the many groups that we are approaching projects like this as we look for ways to redevelop our existing sites. So more specifically about the system, it is delineated by the red boundary you see on the screen. We serve sixteen thousand customers here by twenty five existing wells. This community is unique in the fact that it's almost entirely built already. We have all of our wells. Most of them were built between nineteen fifty nine and nineteen seventy seven. They last about sixty years typically. So this is a system that has a lot of existing old wells and we're looking to replace as many as we can. We'll have to replace all of them somewhere or another. So we have sixteen wells that need to be replaced in the next ten years. So we're looking for ways to replace the area through vacant lots, parks, schools. And one day we'll probably see people towns going down as new sites need to be developed in one way or another. So before we get to any of those later in our draft steps, we're looking for easy ways to work with our communities and we see this as an opportunity here. So we're specifically talking about the White Rock Park. This is the part of one hundred and fifty on White Rock Road. And we're looking at a small portion at the very back of the park. So it's one of the larger parts in the area and we're looking at this little blue corner in the back. About a quarter acre and it abuts one of our existing well sites. It's hard to tell on the screen now. But this corner here is an existing well site that was built with the community. We would love for this well to last forever. But it aged out. The steel casing just rots over time and then age replaced. It is too small to ever put a well there ever again, but if we come across the fence in the blue area shown on the screen, we can develop this area and extract the exact same water quality where we won't have to provide any advanced treatments, keep the cost of our customers down. And hopefully this leaves an area that isn't planned for future development of the park and has a minimal impact on your guys' facility. So we're looking at a site that would provide approximately two million gallons of drinking water a day and be hopefully minimal impact to you guys. So overall, these projects take a couple of years. We're in the very early stages of project development and we'll move forward with you guys' approval to begin our community outreach efforts. That's largely why we're here today, to present to you guys the project before we present it to anyone else. If we have a green light forward, it's an opportunity to work together or towards the property acquisition and come at a later date for our approval of a easement for the area. That easement will be a price, the world purchase land for you guys based on the fair operating value. We just follow the standards, pay nine percent of the top ninety percentile of property value and we'll go from there. From that point, we move through engineering, permitting, work for the city of Rancho Portova, and then eventually move into site construction, which would largely happen in twenty twenty five. So for all these projects, we have a strong effort to engage the community and prepare people for coming. It's much easier if everyone so a project like this, we'll do a couple of community outreach meetings, talk to Laura about using the onsite vending app while the park will distribute a mailer to everyone within walking distance of the park. And further if you guys would like, that can be as large as it needs to be, but we'll want to encourage much involvement and get everyone on board and get an opportunity for annual projections to raise them and educate them on why this project matters and what happens for that. So that's the key point for why we're here today. And give you a more more concrete idea of what this will look like in your backyard. This is the existing site next to the access road. There it's a largely uneven plot of grass that busts the freeway. There's a large wall in the back there and we're basically looking to just cut across it and put our site in. So the next slide will be the most aggressive way this site would ever look like for you guys. If we didn't do anything at all and we just developed this site and needed to provide treatment, we would be looking at a site security wall and a couple of tanks in the background. That's what you're saying there. These can be painted any color and more likely than not, we will work with park staff to do what we can to minimize the aesthetic impacts of the site. So easily that becomes trees. These are smaller trees than you see in the back there and sometimes it can be pretty easily hit. This slide we put together to be a bit of a shock factor of, hey, this is the worst it'll ever be. We'll do everything we can to minimize our impact. And if you remember the slide earlier, it's a pretty small portion of the park that's like that. So we're kind of wrapping this up at this point. I'd like to thank everyone, the CRPD team. They've been in talks for quite a while on this one. And I appreciate all the communication with them and ability to help bring this forward to you guys today. I will close with putting my information out there for everyone. My number is on here, my email right here. I will be a point of contact for any questions you have throughout the process in the future. And we'll answer anything you have that can be addressed here today. The next slide is just the question slide. I'll kind of skip that for now in case anyone wants to take down the number. But at this point, I'd like to open it up, engage interest, see where your guys' initial thoughts are and hopefully through here getting a green light to start letting the community know that this might be tough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any public comments? Nothing? All right. We'll do our usual tip of the dice. Chair Mattis, any question?
Yeah. So on the the existing access of the White Rock Park, what would you guys do with that little alley road? Your slide number seven.
So where that tree shadow is here, we would more or less just construct a driveway in the site.
Well, you already have the driveway. Isn't that the well site, that quarter?
Oh, sorry. We are we are going to construct a new access way from the street access.
Okay. So what would you do with the existing one that you're going to give up then?
We've already done that site. We've, I mean it.
Okay.
So that's, so this is more an example of that's, the neighbors are already familiar with us. They know we're here. We've been there. It takes a little more space to develop these sites and this is a great example of a lot of what a lot of our sites look like now. This is something that we could never put in treatment in. So a hot topic we're talking about right now is the need for PPOS. And about a third of our well sites in Sacramento will probably need treatment. If we have sites like this, we can't have a treatment. There's no, there's no space to put any treatment vessels. So when I'm looking at across the fence and what we need for the future, we're trying to plan for that. So we're not coming back at a later date asking for more space, redeveloping. This gives us, this gives us everything to do.
Would you give those homeowners the opportunity to purchase that? That land that you don't need anymore then?
We incurred it.
You incurred it? Okay, cool.
Yeah.
And as far as, when was that well put in?
That one would have, so because it just came offline, would have been like one of the ones in the early seventies.
Okay. And the obviously the water quality hasn't changed because of fifty, now it's wider.
The only thing that's really changed is drinking water standards. California is more strict they have requirements. But this was one of our better walls. We never need treatment on it. The only reason we stopped using it is simply it was too old and old now.
And on that sound wall there, is there a Caltrans access part in that area that you guys are requesting?
We'll have to look into that. I wasn't, I'm not necessarily familiar with California needing additional access to that.
Do they have all those access walls in the cellar walls?
Oh, so there, there weren't any access points on this. This is just, there's construction points in that sound wall there, but no.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're doing any question?
Yeah, just one. So you stated that the old one was too small a property to redo it. Are you, is this enough property that if you needed to get new stuff, you could get new stuff and keep it there? Or is it some of the warrants?
Yep. No, we can, we can, this this site will be large enough for this well, replacement well and treatment. So it's a looking a hundred years into the future. This is beyond the timeline of our kids' lifetime.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Senator Sloan.
Okay. So what's that blue thing out there?
That is one of the opportunities for us to have a mutual benefit from this project. That is part of your health problem in the back corner is part two.
Another question here. You said, go back to the one where you had the four tanks. And you said, we're going to put a couple of these tanks there, but I see four. Can we start with two and then you're going to add on or?
We'll start with zero. I mean, the we, the the existing well that we're replacing, the one across the fence, never need treatment. We're basically re-reeling that exact well until California changes the water quality standards. We do not expect to need treatment on this well. I say that and and we don't expect it. Things do change.
Well, we're looking at those four things.
Yes.
Tanks. Those are for treatment?
Those are, yeah, so they're typically filled with granular active carbon and it's just like your brick builder at home. It's just large enough to serve a large portion of that amount.
And how high is that fence? The six foot fence?
So that would be a seven foot fence and the tanks in the back are eighteen feet.
Can I go to the other one where you showed the aerial view? That's what they have there. Yeah. So I just, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, it's not area that I'm sure that we're using that much back down back there. But it was a, man, it's a big, larger footprint than you had before. It's like ten times or something.
Did you just get that space?
It it's a, it's for us to be able to actually drill the well. It's, it's the footprint for construction. There's a lot more that goes into these wells than what you get left with after they're built is that year process of getting the well built. And that's why I can never use the site ever again is because the wall is built first and then you build pumps around it and you've never come back. So that's the problem we're trying to fix with the site like this.
Were any of those trees dedicated to treating for anybody? Didn't they know? Were there planted or?
Not to worry. No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Chair Danzel.
No, I think all my questions have been answered. I didn't even have to ask anything.
I agree. So were mine. So what are we, the goal is to get direction or what?
It's an inspirational item. If the board is okay with them moving towards the community outreach phase of his presentation, it's not necessarily a vote, but it seems like there's some consensus that that would be okay from what I'm gathering here. And so I guess that is the green light you were looking for. And then we would be expecting to work with you on that community engagement, you know, opportunities and be very interested in seeing what the public has to say about this particular project so they can make an official approval or consideration for a vote for the actual project to continue on. So and we've discussed this before. So we're well, well worse than our, our process.
I just have one more question too. So the land, would you be leasing the land or purchase the land?
We'd be looking for a easement or above ground easement. Sorry. Utility easement agreement. So it'd be permanent easement. This avoids needing to go through delineation of the property. It typically is your process. We can first it directly or we can leave it around. I've been talked with the park staff about what works best for everyone. It is the easiest process to go the easement route. It doesn't change the value of the land, what we would pay for it. It's just paperwork and yeah.
And it's bigger value. So that's not going to change the value for those two properties behind there?
Not that I, no, no, not that I'm aware of. And their wall, if you go back and look at the their wall is larger than the freeways down wall. So you would have to be on maybe the next street over to be able to see over that wall and any of those things. It won't, it won't. And you don't hear our site. We like, we're there, we're there for maintenance and chemical refills. But our pumps are in sound closures or in the ground. And other than that, we're stopping by to check on our site security wise, but that's.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Okay. Thank you. We look forward to your community outreach meetings.
Thank you.
You, you know, the item D two.
Thank you. Item D two is a presentation by AT&amp;T Vertical Bridge on a cell tower site proposal for Heron Landing Community Park. This is an informative presentation only. No action to be taken by the Board of Directors at this time. And I will I turn it over to CFO Matt Gudell to do the introduction.
Yeah. So it's time we have Joseph, Joseph Sharp, excuse me, from Vertical Bridge or Lotus, right? Lotus. And he proposed that a while ago about essentially putting a cell tower in Heron Landing Community Park. And so we walked around, found some sites that could be potential options. And luckily we have light poles that already have the existing hybrid carbon that they would want. And so without the best, we changed out the light pole. And so he's here to discuss the project and next steps.
Thanks very much. All right. Like you said, I'm Joseph Sharp with Modus LLC. I'd first like to thank the board for the opportunity to present on this topic with the special mention of Mr.'s Larkin and Gudell. I work for a company called Vertical Bridge. You know what? I just played my gear. I'm going to change that right behind me. Technical difficulties online. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Then I'll ask. Vertical Bridge is a company based out of the southeast. Their primary business is building cold cable wireless facilities. Really the main benefit that I always like to point out to groups such as yourselves is that co-location companies like Vertical Bridge reduce the proliferation of cell towers or put it simply, it's better to have one ninety foot tower than have four sixty foot towers. So that's a benefit that we bring to the community, especially in the case of Heron Landing Park, which I personally visited a couple of times where I noticed that a lot of facilities were great, the coverage was terrible. So it is the intent of AT&amp;T to anchor a site at the location to provide not only AT&amp;T coverage, but also FirstNet, which I'll be touching on later. So moving on down, what we are proposing is what's called a light standard replacement, which is where we essentially take one of the existing light poles and replace it with a beefier monopole on which carriers are able to mount their antennas. We're still, it's very early and it's very preliminary, but we're scoping out a spot next to the tennis courts where we can place vertical bridges and equipment area with the intent of hosting multiple carriers and that. Now, really, this is, this is my favorite part. This is a demonstration of what the coverage will look like. The, the assumption in taking this map is that the site was built at ninety foot with the antennas located at the eighty six foot center line. That means the middle of the antennas. So as you can see, the coverage looks essentially bad. That means that you may have reliable coverage outdoors, but you cannot have reliable coverage indoors. With the addition of the site, this is going to be the impact on coverage to the surrounding community. We'll just go back and forth a couple of times just to drive that. So it'll be a really great benefit. AT&amp;T customers and FirstNet customers are going to operate coverage as well, which leads me to the FirstNet nature of the site. Now, I might not be the first person here to talk about FirstNet, but I'm still doing it because I'm excited about it. FirstNet is a federal initiative backed by the FCC that was enacted in two thousand and twelve to address interoperability issues between emergency responders. Really the kind of driver behind this was nine eleven, where you have multiple agencies coming into the city that did not really mesh well with their methods of communications, their equipment and their and this, it's been federal government led to the FirstNet network eleven years later, which is in very simple terms, a dedicated prioritized network for emergency responders that they can sign up for. Feds awarded the project to AT&amp;T due to their ability to scale. So the beauty of this system is that most of the time it's dormant, it's serving normal customers. But in emergency situations, it flips any emergency responder who is a member of the network is waiting out priority, which means commercial calls, me calling my mom to make sure my cat's doing all right, it's going to get dropped, and the emergency responders call it through. So those antennas are going to be home on this tower, which is a really great opportunity. I'm going to pause there for a moment before I go with what's called the focus simulation. Just to ask if there's any questions that I can address.
Excellent.
Okay, so as you can see, this is the view from the main road passing. Uh, it's very hard to notice. One good question that we did get, by the way, was to produce images with a little bit better quality. You can absolutely do that. Uh, depending on what the board would like to see, we'll do as many simulations as we like. But I'm just going to slowly flip through these, uh, and I would really invite you to jump in and stop if there's any questions. The view here is from the west out of the open field. Um, as you can see, power is very difficult to notice and really well blended with the existing light standards at the location. This is from the north, looking down the street toward the park. Again, very difficult to notice. This is a view from uh, looking southwest. It's looking south right from just standing and drive at the entrance to the park. This is one of the, or, no, sorry, I misspoke. This, I'm just further down just standing and drive. At any rate, uh, now what we're interested to see here is that the site is going to provide a great opportunity for all co-locators with a low visual impact. Were there any questions as to the, the design or the location criteria? Where are we supposed to go from that? This way down?
That's what we traditionally do, but.
Well, I didn't, I didn't remember.
Well, maybe we go through the entire presentation. Do you have additional pictures that we discussed?
Oh, okay, so we're, you're done with the presentation?
That's right.
Okay, then we'll, here comes a question. We'll start down the end of the dice with Director Matt. Well, I'll, I'll second your uh, um, evaluation of AT&amp;T coverage in that area, because I used to live out there, so yes, yeah. So this will definitely help you good, a good bonus for the park and for the community as well. And I believe, so the pole would be basically the same light pole that's there, similar looking, is it wider?
It'll be, be your, for sure, okay. Be the exact thickness, it's the, the turn it has again, but it'll, it'll stand out up close.
Okay.
It'll, it'll be there.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, so my one question was um, replacing the lights? Is that a, is there, the lights staying there or are they gone?
We'll keep the lights there.
Okay, okay. Because I, I, I first understood it when I've been looking at the pictures. I can see their lights were still on there, like so. I just wanted to clarify, so, thank you.
So you, you are going to use one of the light poles and change it to a beefier pole with the lights and your thing on top of that?
Yes, right.
So it'll be the same height of the other ones, whatever they're ninety feet all the way around?
Yes, sir.
But you're in, I'd like to be the eyeball in this group. Um, so we're moving to the outfield, so we got lighting outfield. Remember that, I'm just asking.
There are options being considered, and so I don't think it was settled on any, we had one of those as a consideration. Uh, we were aiming towards the connectivity of the compound that's needed and running the, you know, wiring to the actual location. Uh, so that might be a little bit more challenging, uh, if we were to draw it from that area, but we can look at it, I mean, it's an option.
Nothing is said, nothing is said, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I was just, I was looking, you know, because if we can find a way to get more lighting into, into that park, then that's the way to do it versus using what we access panels. Yeah, then we, we're putting actually more light into that, into that part versus just leaving exactly the way out, so that was something I had a question.
Is it, is it, is there an issue now that there's not enough light for the option?
No. More than that light out there at this point. But we can always consider something like that in uh, not only the community outreach, uh, but also just of course for uh, consideration. So when we go back out after, you know, during the community outreach phase, we'll look at those opportunity sites that we discussed and see if we can get an additional benefit of light, if that's what you're looking at, uh, having this considered as well.
And as a lesson, I appreciate the question.
Um, so this pole will be there, of course, if it's all said and done. What about uh, will there be any kind of mechanical boxes somewhere with uh, other things in it? How big are those and how much space are those going to take?
Absolutely. Uh, so the carriers will locate ground equipment within the leased closure. That will be enclosed within, uh, we haven't really settled on the design yet, but we typically pitch either a CME wall or a uh, chain link fence with vinyl slack, screen that ground equipment. But to your question, the ground equipment cabinets are not the size of a refrigerator. AT&amp;T will likely deploy two or three, that is to be determined, but combined with our containment at least area. It's also possible that a new transformer may be required uh, as we progress through the application process. Those things will come to light as we get our architecture and engineering to evolve. Does, does that answer your question?
Yes.
All right, uh, I know, I always forget to ask these on these. Uh, and then also, obviously you put the pole in, say it goes through. Uh, ten years down the line, you want to add upgrade, were all the conduits that go to power the antenna, were those being closed inside the pole? Or is that gonna, we're going to try to keep away from attaching things to the outside of the structure?
I mean, we, we always need to put things within the hole. And as far as, uh, as far as, as far as conflict is going to be added, not only within the tower, but also leading to it. Uh, we really, we really designed these with future.
Okay, so you got an extra.
So when that, there's no other questions, is the board uh, okay with giving them the green light to move towards the community outreach?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, there you go. So Matt and I will reach out on the next steps and we'll go.
Sounds good. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving on to E and committee reports, I see none. So it's time for it's time to move on to the board hearing.
Thank you. We've reached the portion of the meeting for the public hearings. Item F one is to adopt the solution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash eight approving engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the independence of either landscaping and lighting assessment district.
All right, open the public hearing at seven twenty-four.
And all welcome to the podium, Brian Brown from Francisco and Associates.
He drove all the way out here, so I, I had a script ready to be, to go, but I'll let Brian take it from here and dive right in.
All right, well, thank you, Matt. Uh, so, so good evening. Uh, tonight we have a brief informational presentation uh, on the item for you. Uh, the district for the independence of landscaping and landscaping subdivision was formed in two thousand. And this district contains landscaping and park and recreational improvements in the independence of our subdivision. Uh, tonight's the third step of the three-step process to approve uh, these assessments. This occurs every year, instead of happening, this I just come before the board every year since two thousand. So this is something that definitely has been before you in the past. The first action for this year occurred on April nineteenth, uh, where the board directed staff to start the process and direct the preparation of the engineering report. The second action occurred on June twenty-first, when the preliminary engineer's report was received by the board and approved. Um, and a public hearing was set for July nineteenth. Tonight, being July nineteenth, board is being asked to hold a public hearing, take public testimony, and approve the final engineer's report and authorize levy of assessments for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. The fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four maximum assessment rates are proposed to be increased five point six percent over the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three assessment rates. They propose that the district levy these maximum assessment rates this year. The fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four assessment may be increased annually by the greater of the change in the San Francisco Area Supermarket Index, four three percent. The CPI was five point six, which is why that's uh, the escalator for this year. Uh, therefore, maximums of the rates are both increased by that five point six percent. Uh, this equates to the maximum subrate for single family home increased from a hundred to ninety dollars and fourteen cents to two hundred and, to two hundred and seventy, two hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents per home, which is a ten dollars fifty-five cent difference per year. Uh, the revenue from this district is approximately two hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. And I can do a representation this evening, but we're available answering by the chair.
All right, thank you. Uh, any uh, public comment on the site?
We have no requests.
All right, uh, none, none. I'm going to be out of the audience. We will close the public hearing at seven twenty-six. All right, does the board have any questions? Guess we're going to start down there. I see a shaking of the, note of the head there, Director Matt, how about you, Dirk? How about you, Secretary Sloan?
How about you, Vice Chair Danzel?
No.
And I have none either, so anybody care to make a motion?
I'm going to the board of directors, adopt resolution twenty-four slash, uh, resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash eight approving engineer's report, confirming diagrams and assessments and ordering levy of assessments for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for independence of, at basic landscaping assessment district.
All right, motion by Vice Chair Danzel to have a second.
I'll say it.
Second by Director Mattis, proposal.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Director Langin?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yourwood?
Aye.
All right, so I guess we'll move on to the second public, uh, hearing item is F two.
Thank you. Item F two is to adopt resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash nine approving engineer's report, confirming diagram and assessment and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four for the Cordova Recreation of Park District Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
All right, we'll open the public hearing at seven twenty-eight.
And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you. Uh, so we have a similar presentation uh, for the evening related to the park maintenance and recreational improvement of southern district. This district, this district was formed in two thousand and six, and again funds assistance with the funding related to the landscaping park recreational improvements throughout the boundary of the district. This is the third step of the name of three-step process. Again, the first step occurred on April nineteenth, the board directed preparation of the engineer's report. Second step occurred on June twenty-first, when the board received that engineer's report, uh, approved it and set a public hearing date for July nineteen. Tonight, being July nineteenth, being asked to hold a public hearing, approve the final engineer's report, and authorize levy of assessments for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four maximum assessment rates are proposed to be increased by three percent uh, over last year's rates and propose that the district levy maximum rates. Uh, this year, twenty-three, twenty-four assessments can be, or the assessments can be increased annually by the change in the San Francisco Area CPI um, for, the, or with an occupancy of three percent. So it's CPI with an occupancy three percent, so the escalator is different than our last district. Uh, therefore, uh, maximums of rates are only increased by three percent this year for uh, department maintenance and recreational improvement district. Uh, maximum subrate for single family home is increasing from thirty dollars and twenty cents to thirty-one dollars and eleven cents, which equates to about a ninety-one cent uh, increase year over year. Uh, the revenue that's projected to generate from this district is approximately one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And that concludes the presentation this evening, but again, I don't answer anybody, yeah.
All right, thank you. Any uh, public comments?
We have no requests.
No, I want to know.
All right, we will go to close the uh, the public uh, hearing at seven thirty. Any comments? How about you, Director Matt, we're, we're tremendous now, how about, now, Dirk? Secretary Sloan, how about you, Vice Chair Danzel?
Seven and a half cents a month.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, uh, go with that.
I don't look at.
Yeah, mine's a little bit too quiet down. All right, uh, and I have no questions out there. Any care to make a motion?
I'm going to the board of directors and adopt resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash nine approving engineer's report, confirming that diagram and certain and ordering levy of assessment for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four for Cordova Recreation of Park District Park Maintenance and Recreation.
All right, a motion by Vice Chair Danzel to have a second. Uh, second by Secretary Sloan. Broke all the rules.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Director Langin?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yourwood?
Aye.
All right, looks like we'll be moving on to G, regular calendar.
Thank you. These are special proceedings regarding community facilities district number twenty-eighteen dash zero one park facilities and services annexation number eight, the ranch. Item G one is to adopt resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash ten accepting the annexation of property located in future annexation area to the Cordova Recreation Park District Community Facilities District number twenty-eighteen dash zero one park facilities and services tax zone number one. And I'll turn it over to CF, uh, turn it over to you, CFO Goodell.
All right, I'm going to introduce Brian Brown since he's here tonight and drove all this way. And so again, um, if he wants to take it over, if not, I can. You look like you're ready, okay, all right, go. Or whatever different treatments for this.
Yeah, I thought there was an item in between that went down the agenda and I realized it wasn't, so I, my apologies. Um, yeah, tonight, the goal of the presentation is to provide some background on the CFD annexation process. So as well as the development of annexing into the CFD, um, as referenced in the item and resolution before you. So the date of D two thousand and eighteen dash one was formed in December of twenty eighteen. CFD was formed around two projects with a future annexation area boundary that's determined for the boundaries of the whole district. And after formation, property with a future annexation area may be annexed into the CFD via streamline process. Through this process, the property owner completes an annual approval form where the property owner approves the annexation of the properties to the CFD and any levying of such tax on the property. Uh, the statute does not require that the streamline process for the annexation of property within the CFD's future annexation within the future annexation area actually be approved by the board. However, as best practice, the district brings each annexation before the board and as a resolution approved to ensure transparency in the public record of each annexation occurring. Uh, this would result in only one board meeting instead of standard three board meetings, uh, to complete the annexation process. The first annexation occurred in two thousand and nineteen, and then the recent annexation was annexation number seven, which actually occurred in late last year. Uh, so tonight, the resolution before you recognizes that the property owner of the ranch project requested a portion of their project annexed into CFD. And based on the development projection provided by the developer, it's estimated that this project will consist of a hundred ninety-six single-family detached units, two hundred and fifty multi-family residential units, and approximately six acres of non-residential space to build out. Development's condition to mitigate the fiscal impacts of this project and the property owners required by a finding mechanism for the developments associated financial impacts. The operation, maintenance, and replacement of existing proposed public parks that are maintained by the CFD. The initial approval will be satisfied by the property's annexation into a participation in the CFD. And fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four maximum special tax rate for single-family home is four hundred, approximately four hundred and eighty-five dollars. This uh, rate can adjust annually by the greater of the Bay Area Supermarket Index, four three percent. And the tax may be done in perpetuity to pay for services that along with the district is continuing to provide services to the area. The ranch development is projected to generate approximately a hundred, or this portion of the ranch development is projected to generate approximately a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars in revenue and that build out. And actually, this is our presentation on the item, on the items. If you have any questions, go over there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, sort of then, Mark, uh, Group Director Mattis? No, that, no? Secretary Sloan? Vice Chair Danzel?
No.
And I have none either. Anybody care to make a motion?
Okay, I'm going to the board of directors and adopt resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash ten accepting that the annexation property located in the future annexation area to the Cordova Recreation Park District Community to the facilities district number two zero one eight dash zero one park facilities and services tax zone one annexation at number eight, the ranch.
All right, a motion by Vice Chair Danzel, anybody care to say? Second, second by Director Langin, broke all the rules.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Director Langin?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
And Chair Yourwood?
Aye.
So we can, we'll move on to G two.
Thank you. The special proceedings continue regarding community facilities district number twenty-eighteen dash zero one park facilities and services this is annexation number nine, the ranch active adult. And item G two is to adopt resolution twenty-three slash twenty-four dash eleven accepting the annexation of property located in a future annexation area to the Cordova Recreation of Park District Community Facilities District number twenty-eighteen dash zero one park facilities and services tax zone number three. I'm T man.
All right, thank you. So this annexation is taking additional territory of the ranch project, Nancy, into the same CFD. With that said, uh, the portion that I'm focusing on is the active adult. With that said, uh, the portion that I'm focusing on is the active adult, uh, portion of the ranch project. And the property owners again requesting to annex into the, into tax zone number three. This will be a new tax zone, uh, that's being created for parcels and developments like the ranch's active adult community that privately fund the maintenance and operation of parks, recreation, landscaping improvements uh, within close proximity of the parcels or development through homeowners and property owners association, but also the, in the need to, the district's improvements and whatnot, and have access to them. For that reason, um, parcels within tax zone number three will be subject to lower tax rates than the other tax zones. And based on the development projection provided by the developer, it's estimated that this project will consist of seven hundred and five single-family detention units, uh, thirty-eight multi-family residential units, and again approximately six acres of non-residential space built up. Again, this, uh, and seeing that this project in the CFD will, of the developer, uh, mitigate the fiscal impact of their project on, uh, district improvements, as well as help them satisfy the, uh, condition of approval. The fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four tax zone number three, maximum special tax rates are estimated to be, are a hundred and six, approximately a hundred and sixty-six dollars per single-family home. And these rates again may increase annually, along the greater of the super price index, four-three percent. Uh, again, taxes in this tax zone can be lent in perpetuity to pay for services along with the district providing services, as all the other tax zones. And the active, the ranch's active development is projected to generate approximately a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year build out. No, and that concludes our presentation this evening, but again, don't have any questions.
All right, thank you, uh, any questions? I'm not going to name everybody, if anybody has any questions, anybody care to make a motion?
I move the Board of Directors to adopt Resolution twenty-three, twenty-four dash eleven, accepting an annexation of property located in the future annexation area to the Cordova Recreation Park District Community Facilities District number two zero one eight dash zero one, park facility services, tax zone number three, and annexation number nine, the ranch, active adult community.
All right, motion by Director Mattis, do I have a second? Second, second by Vice Chair Danzel, roll call moved.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Director Langin?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Brian.
Yes, thank you, Brian.
I always have questions for me when I present, so I'm glad you did. All right, so I guess we will move on to H, Board of Director item.
Thank you, item H one A is to appoint three members to the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District, PMRID, Citizens Oversight Committee. And since this process is new for our two board members, I'm going to review the staff report in a little more detail. The PMRID Oversight Nominating Standing Committee is, consists of, uh, Vice Chair Danzel and Director Mattis. And they will be making recommendations or appointments to two Zone E seats, which is Metro Cordova, and one Zone C seat, which is Gold River. The makeup of the Oversight Committee is two seats for Metro Cordova and one seat for Gold River. The open application period for available seats was advertised in the grapevine, and also through a CRPD email blast. And although applications are accepted year-round, the deadline for these openings was April thirtieth. The Oversight Committee Nominating Standing Committee met on June eighth to review the applications and to go over the available positions. Position one is Zone E, Metro Cordova, a full term of four years. Josh Armstrong was appointed to this seat originally on August nineteen, twenty-twenty. The current term expired on June thirtieth. Member Armstrong did not reapply. And there were a total of five applications received for zoning to be evaluated for both positions. Position two, Zone E, Metro Cordova, the unfinished term of two years. Lexie Hallam was appointed to this seat on June sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. And we received a letter of resignation from her due to moving out of the assessment district boundaries. This position will complete the unfinished term. And position three, Zone C, Gold River, full term of four years. Doug Rothschild was first appointed to this seat on January eighteen, twenty-seventeen, and was previously reappointed. The current term expired on June thirtieth. Member Rothschild did reapply. A total of six applications were received for Zone C, one applicant did withdraw prior to the nominating standing committee meeting. We are requesting three separate actions and three separate motions to complete these nominations. And I'll turn it over to the nominating committee.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. So we did meet, we reported out on that last month, um, we do have some names for you that the committee picked, obviously the board can still, um, nominate somebody else, and then we go to that vote, but, um, Ms. Jones, can we start position three, just because of what we said at the dais? So Director Mattis, if you'd like to go on, uh, uh, position three, due to the fact that it is Gold River, um, and is your area, and you just happen to be saying this, that, the dais this way, um, I'll start there, and put your, put your, or the committee's appointee out there, and we'll go from there?
Yes, we got, uh, we had four applicants, and I was actually really impressed with the applicants, uh, we put the word out there, and, uh, there's a lot of excitement for it. And the name that we want to put forward is Tracy Mitchell. Uh, she comes back with a background of a, she worked for the last six years for the city of West Sacramento, she was the director of the Parks and Recreation under the city. Uh, she worked with finance and economic development, so that kind of stuck out with us on that part, um, and she lives in Gold River, so it's always good to have another avenue, another source to talk to, to see how we can get things out for the community and the parks.
Perfect, thank you, so, because we're going to agree, uh, Tracy Mitchell is who the, the committee go, um, there, it's gone with, but that doesn't mean the board has to choose that, it is a, it is a, um, we are a democracy and we do, and every board member does have all the applications to look at. Is there any other names that would like to be brought forward? All right, now do I hear a motion for Tracy Mitchell for position three?
I move Board of Directors appoint Tracy Mitchell to the PMRID Oversight Committee Zone C, Gold River, for a four-year term expired in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
All right, motion by Director Langin, second by Secretary Sloan, roll call moved.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Director Langin?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Danzel?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
Thank you, uh, position one of a PMRID, the, uh, we did have several applicants, um, for that, which was great, it's been a while since I think we've had this many applicants for Ranch, the Ranch Cordova area, um, the applicants we did have, um, were having to split between two, two positions, um. Um, I hope everybody's gotten a, a chance to actually look at all of them so they can make a decision, but the committee went with, uh, Taylor Haven for the four-year position, um, Taylor is, uh, some coming recently back into the community, into, into Zone, uh, Zone one, or Area one, or just one, whatever we're calling it right now, uh, has been a big, big supporter of the district, um, she was, her family were the ones who, uh, worked on the, um, trying to, uh, secure funding on the second wave of the property, and, uh, is a big, big supporter of ours, I think she beats most of us to liking her posts and sharing her posts with the rest of the community, and I don't think looking over and knowing her personally, I don't think she's ever said a negative thing about the district. Um, so, and part of that is that her father-in-law actually sat on the district a, as a board member years ago, so she understands a little bit about what's going on in the district. So that was, uh, the committees for the, uh, position one, which is the four-year. So if there's any, any concerns, questions, or any other nominations for that?
Vice Chair Danzel, do you mind if I ask if there's any opportunities for recusal at all?
Um, sure, yes, I need to recuse myself from this, the, both of these votes actually due to the fact that one of the applicants is my mother, um. Um, the committee did not choose my mother, but that, that does not say that, so I will not be voting on either position one or two. My mother, my mother, Kathy Godega.
So she was announced like that?
She was announced, so I removed myself from, from that. Um, when the committee met, the committee actually didn't go over this. Director Mattis, um, had, had some say in this, I actually had to recuse myself from part of that, because I'm not in the room, so Director Mattis got a chance to read the applications, so, thank you for that, Brian, Ms. Jones.
Uh, I move to, I move the Board of Directors to appoint Taylor Haven to the PMRID Oversight Committee Zone A, Ranch Grove, for the four-year term expiring June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Motion by Director Mattis, second vice Secretary Sloan, roll call moved.
Sorry, if you could please recuse yourself from the room?
Open.
Sorry, motion by Director Mattis?
Second by Secretary Sloan.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Director Langin?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Danzel is absent.
So are you going to tell us about, uh, number two? He says he's, he's not coming back yet, right? Okay.
So her zone, uh, so the other seat was a two-year seat to fill, the, uh, person that had to resign, their seat removed, was, uh, Lauren Ledesma. Um, it was the same thing, it was a really good candidate in there, um, and we decided to put Taylor first to offer the four-year, and then have Lauren as the, uh, two-year, and if any case that, uh, Taylor cannot do that position, we would offer the position, the four-year term to Lauren. Uh, again, we had plenty of good applicants, and there was a lot that really stuck out, so it was, it was really hard to choose between these, and this was the second best candidate that we felt was in this file.
So I have a quick question, so if Haven doesn't want the four-year, they can't, can they just put blood like that, or?
Uh, the recommendation is if that were to be the case, we would have to, um, the plan was for, um, Lauren to be the alternative, if Taylor does not accept it.
Two-year, then the alternative for?
Lauren, you're just going to just put her in for the two-year, and then if we have a, a lack of interest, or they don't want to be appointed after saying, hey, the result of this site, uh, then we can, uh, pivot to, uh, changing, it's more related to the four-year term. If that is rejected, then we would shuffle and do the Lauren and the fourth-year position, and then we'd have to come back to the board with another recommendation if that were to happen.
Okay, so just, it's because we tell, if we vote tonight to put her in the two-year, do we have to then come back at some point to vote her in the four-year?
No. Um, well, if Taylor Haven decides not to continue on with her application, decides, uh, thank you, no thank you, then the recommendation from the committee was for Lauren to be, uh, getting that four-year term if it's rejected, and then we have to come back to the board with the remaining, uh, amount of applicants to fill the two-year term. So it's a little bit of a backup plan B if necessary, but I don't expect or anticipate that being happening.
All right, any, uh, concerns about that nominee?
I just, you know, I don't know much about, uh, Ms. Ledesma. I do know more about Joyce Ickden, she's been active voice in the community for many years. With the, uh, the Blue Marlins and the tool and all that kind of stuff, I just want to know what the committee was, why the decision for Ledesma, or go on who's been proven.
From what I understand, I wasn't here, um, previously, uh, from what I understood is that, uh, the main reason why Taylor was selected was because she was very positive for the district, uh, worked with the district, knows how it works. And, uh, there was, uh, discussions about, uh, past on that advocate that you're talking about, so we.
They did?
Um, yes.
Yes.
So that's why we chose the two of again.
All right, well, I'll make the motion if, uh, everybody's ready. I'll make the motion, uh, I move the Board of Directors to appoint, uh, Lauren Ledesma, I hope I'm saying that right, uh, okay, uh, to the P, to the PMRID Oversight Committee Zone A, Ranch Grove, to fill the two-year, to have an unfinished term expiring on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Anybody care to second that? Second, all right, motion by Chair Yearwood, second by Director Langin, roll call moved.
Director Mattis?
Aye.
Director Langin?
Aye.
Secretary Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Yearwood?
Aye.
And Vice Chair Danzel is absent.
All right, so we'll move on to item H two for member reports and comments. I guess we need to ask. Brian's probably having a second dinner.
H two, board member reports and comments, item H two A is training report, there was none for the last period. Item H two B, uh, since this is a new fiscal year, uh, this is a great time for a reminder about events that are compensated. So I am just going to review, uh, the top portion of the staff report. Uh, this agenda item is an opportunity for board members to discuss community activities and matters relevant to CRPD. Or compensation is not guaranteed for nor determined by items listed in this report or discussed in the meeting. The board is compensated only for those activities defined as meetings in CRPD board policies and by state law. And state law does require board members to report out on meetings they are compensated for. Thank you, Chair Yearwood?
Why, thank you, all right, uh, so we're going to go to, let's see, we'll go to the end of the dais, there, Director Mattis for his report.
It was, uh, a short one, so I just went to the, uh, Fourth of July parade in the city of Ranch Grove, that was a lot of fun, had to split my time between ours and, uh, pal with the, with my kids doing baseball. And then, um, family enjoyed, nice day at July third at the, uh, that Monday at the, uh, Hagan Community Park. That was a really nice, fun celebration, kids got to ride the train, ride the rides, we won a head fish.
That's still live.
One of us.
I wasn't very happy, but oh, well.
Yeah.
The new pad.
All right, okay, then I guess we'll move on to Director.
Yeah, so, uh, July third, I went to the Hagan fireworks, uh, at Hagan, and, uh, just the celebration, and that was, uh, it was, there was a lot of people. There was a lot of people, but it was also really cool to be able to be there, to see that. I honestly usually go up to Jackson, um, on the third, on the third, and, uh, go see their fireworks show. And it's kind of this small-town vibe, but I still got that same vibe, even with the kind of people over there, so for me, like, even though there was a ton of people, a lot more than what I'm used to, uh, it, it was a great job, um, and, uh, yeah, so fun time, family having a good time, uh, my two young kids fell asleep in the middle, um, one of them in the middle of the fireworks show, don't ask me how that happened, but uh, it happened, so. And then, uh, July fourth, the, uh, uh, the parade, the Fourth of July parade was awesome, had a great time, did a great job on the float, um, just with that, being able to walk and just say, hi, I have some people, and, uh, uh, it's just, just a great time to, um, just be able to, to be there, and there was a lot of, hey, you guys are doing great, good job, and so that was just, uh, really cool to hear, and, um, great support out there, and be able to, be able to see. Great support out there and be able to be able to see that, and I believe uh there was around like eighty. Eighty-three floats, something like that out there, and so just, it was, it was a cool time, cool opportunity, so thank you, and then um July sixth, the RCA meeting. Um, and really, the the one thing that I want to uh say is just how thankful they were. Um, just for the Pulse project and everything else coming with that, um, and just, just, I, they might be thinking like three or four times. Um, and so um just being there, dedicating it and all that, um, and so, uh, just, just a a great time. Uh, updated them on the sports court and uh also, you know, talked a little bit, a little bit about the party in the park and and uh promoted that, hey. There's any vendors out there, you know, we were still looking at that time, so, yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Secretary Sloan.
Good on uh. Tuesday, June twenty seventh, I attended the Breka. Uh, three community meeting uh at the library. And uh at that meeting, uh, Mark Berry gave a presentation on the Cassis property. And um, as you all know, it's starting to move forward with uh. New uh, new plans. But uh, as far as I've I've know so far, they have not added enough parkland to our liking. So that's still uh being negotiated or bigger, not negotiated, but it uh. Hasn't come back to them before it comes back to us with approval, we have not. Also, uh, Little Library is uh underway, they're gonna uh welder out in one of the uh. Residents is a welder, he's gonna put together a roof on a uh. Existing uh B box. Newspaper box and go. We'll park it, we'll install it, we'll be on that go. On Saturday, July first, I was uh. One of the many people that braved the heat. Since it was a hundred and eight degrees earlier in the day. But David Garibaldi gave a great performance out at um. Village Green Park. And um. Painted three uh paintings that were about four by six feet each. Did about fifteen minutes per painting. He did it to uh a lot of rock and roll music in the background and. It was a real interesting uh. Back to see, and I actually I wrote, it's going to be in a great climate this weekend, this week when it comes up. You can see what you guys.
What was the subject?
Uh, the one, the first one that painted was the Mac, our building that has become a signature uh uh venue. In the, in our city here in Rancho. Um, it's, you know, it is by the major station. But it was the uh, that was, that was one of the the first ones. And then the second one was our multicultural diverse community, had three people. That were depicting different cultures. Um, and the fourth one was the front of City Hall, the big twenty or above with the higher balloon. And one side was a rocket ship blasting off of an air jet. And the other side was the river going up into the levees, the back going out, so it was kind of neat. And the city owns the all three pieces now, so. You guys will be seeing them pop up somewhere. Um, the next thing was on July third, I was at the Hagan Park and. It went to Director Langin said it was, it was crowded. Darling didn't get a little too crowded for my liking, it's totally, uh, if I wasn't in a confined space, it would be more of a zoo. So it was uh, and I don't, I don't like this, so like I was. They have to move the VIP area further back. And not as, not as much, but. I did appreciate what the park looked great, uh, and everything sounded good, the year, I guess there was a little bitch in the show that night. Compared to the previous, the next night, if you went to those of them. Um, the next day I did the parade, I photographed most of everything, and then I I walked down the little ways with uh with the park district. And to go to the uh curb in the. In the room, and I hopped back and took out the rest of the the parade. And I'm excited that Mother Nature cooled off a little bit that day, because it would have been kind of tough for everyone. Um. Went in the fireworks that night, and the the fireworks that night were unbelievable, because I've never seen a drone show and fireworks overlapping. Um, so you you'd see the American flag. Or the state of California with the star with a spectrum in the in the background with fireworks going off, and it was really deep. I photographed the best I could, did some graphic damage, you're even next to my camera, so my post was one of them. Uh, it was a pretty exciting uh last few. Uh, month so far, it's been pretty exciting, it's gonna get more exciting with what's going on. And I'm sorry I missed the uh, the Aqua Show, I I had a family event I had to go to, like. Then I, you know, I know it was hot, but I live in Santa Cruz, cool.
All right, Vice Chair Dancel.
So I participated in the Ranch Grove uh Fourth of July parade, which was a wonderful thing, um, somehow I snuck a nap in earlier that morning. There are, there is evidence of that, so I will just put it out, so I'm not not hiding anything from anybody, because the picture will eventually get out. Um.
Where'd you take the nap?
Um.
In the back.
Um, just, just truck, I um.
Okay.
Hit the door, opened my feet up on the dash, it's brand new truck, use the landing. At all, but I'm. But yeah, we um, it was. Um, that week for me is a long week, I have other things that go on that week, um, outside uh my normal park district uh stuff, so. But I did my make time this year to be in a great, um, it was, it was great, like Director Langin said, seeing people, you know, and they having to thank us for the work we're doing is. Incredible, I mean, it just reinforces what we do as the right thing for our community, and then um also I had the um Cora Cordnet's Aqua Show. Um. I remember decades ago, when that program was very large. And you know, seventy, seventy kids in it, and then it dwindled down to about six to eight kids. Um, a few years ago, and now we're back into twenty-five kids and continues growing that uh organization, most of their. Swimmers right now are little, which is good, so that only gives us the opportunity to grow uh with that, which is great. And have long-term swimmers, because we are one of the few communities that still has, you know, synchronized swimming, so it's, it's really fun. Uh, the kids did a great job, our lifeguards. For putting together a show within, you know, a two-day period, they. They they did, they did well, they're a little fast in the big wash, it looks a little bit still, but you know, we'll find a way to slow them down in their uh. Their movements, but they they did a great job, and you know, they they do their job all all summer long, and it's great to see them get out there and actually have. Fun in the water than sit up in a chair and work, so they they do deserve to have some fun at times, sitting in a lifeguard chair, does. It's stressful, you know, people think it can't be, but you know, decades ago, I worked for Six Flags Waterworld, and as a manager, we all had to be lifeguard trained, and. When we didn't have enough staff, guess what, the junior manager had to become a lifeguard and. I uh ended up on my first, first save as as a manager, and and I was fully dressed that day, and people looked at me, and I'm like, you're crazy. Why would you do that? Well, somebody's got to do it, so we do what we gotta do, but um, you know, that event is fun. Um, they had lots of participation by parents, they had lots of prizes, and um I can't tell you how many thank yous. That I heard for the um. The complex at at Hagan Park, you know, they're very happy to be back home and not having swim pros line anymore, and so they feel that that's part of the reason the programs were back. All again.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, so let's see, what did I do? I started out the July third, I was here in this room for a city council meeting, uh, where. A lot of uh folk came by to recognize that's the twentieth. And uh I presented them a proclamation for the district that we had approved a while back and uh. Um, it was a nice night, a lot of wonderful uh words were said, um. Some by me. Um. I did make a comment about the county, but but uh, uh, then I uh took my life in my own hands, and I hopped on the train. And I took the train from here over to Hagan, you know, it was a little sketchy on the freeway, but we did it, um. No, we didn't go on the freeway, so that was interesting, uh, it was very interesting to drive by, go by people as cars are driving by, and they're like, what the heck is this? Um, and people who were watering their lawns started waving at us and stuff, so it was quite, it was quite interesting, I had some pictures, I might eventually share them sometime. Um, so that led me to Hagan, where we got over there for a concert and uh fireworks show. Uh, yes, the place was always, I'm always amazed, especially when the lights go down. For the, for the fireworks show, and then you come back up and how there's that many people in there, so. Uh, but it was a nice, nice night, I actually liked it in the big pavilion, I thought the the VIP area being there gave you a better view of the show, because the other one was closer to those big tall trees, so. But uh, and the lightning, somebody put up, it looked fabulous, so I wanted to that guy, I'll, I'll lock that person, okay, excellent, so, and then. Went home, went to bed, came back the next morning for the parade, which was, I was great, I will be doing it again, um, uh. Uh, it was the flow looked great, staff did a great job getting everything ready, it was great to see everybody out there. I don't know, because I haven't been to the parade in a couple of years, but it sure looks like a lot more people are attending the the parade now. So it was great to see people lining the street, I also kind of liked, they did something a little different this year, they had. People at uh, one by our brand new park was announcing all the people as they came by, then somebody by the St. John's Canyon was announcing everybody, then down the corner, Kurt Haven was there. So people who were down the way were hearing kind of who these people were and things like that, I thought that was kind of a nice thing to do. So that was, that was good, and of course, a lot of people thanking us, seeing a lot of old friends and that out there, um. There was this one band that was leaving after we we dropped, got to the drop off pod, there was this one band that was so dedicated, they did not stop playing till they walked into the park. Uh, the parking lot of Cora uh, Cora Gardens. They were, they wouldn't stop, so. Um, and then that night, uh, headed out to Hagan again for a very nice fireworks show and drone show, and there were even more people out there, I think. Uh, I'm sure we'll get those numbers, but uh, there was quite the sea of humanity out there, um, was a little tricky getting out of that night, too. It took a while to get out of that parking lot, even after waiting about thirty minutes to get to my car, so. Um, and then the cordons this last weekend, it's again, a great show, great program. Uh, I agree, it's nice to see the little guys out there, they're just too adorable out there doing that stuff. Um, I would like to recommend that maybe we do it in the middle of November, cooler, uh, maybe we heat the pool warm. It always happens to seem like I'm on the most hottest day, so, but it was really nice, we walked out and. Uh, to where they were doing snow cones, and the park looks fabulous, considering two weeks prior to that, there was all this stuff out there, and all these people transferring on it. The park looks phenomenal, in my opinion, if they, if I should have been able to agree, because he actually made that comment, I agree with himself. Uh, it looked great, so that is all I have. To report, so it looks like we will move on to item I, comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you, item I one is the district-wide monthly progress report for July, and I'll turn it over to GM Luntan.
Thank you, Court Jones. Uh, all right, some highlights from the past month, the big news, obviously, we moved our administration offices. We are now down the street at one one zero seven zero White Rock Road. Thank you to all of the staff that worked really, really hard in getting all of our stuff over there, and the patience in getting us settled. Uh, we've had some, you know, needs to tweak our HVAC system and some bugs to be worked out. Uh, but for the most part, I do appreciate all your guys' efforts in making sure that transition went as smoothly as possible. Uh, the place is fantastic, we are open to giving you tours, uh, just let us know, and we'd be happy to walk you through the new office area. Um, Jill and I attended the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting on July eleven. We were one of two districts that was uh in partnership and recognition for their proclamation or resolution for July as National Parks and Recreation Month. Uh, so we were really uh excited to be representing our district with the Board of Supervisors, and we did nice photo ops and things like that, so. Uh, they're a great partner with us, and we will continue to uh support each other in all of our endeavors going forward. Uh, I do want to thank the amazing park staff. And especially Jill Nuns for all of the work for leading up to and including the July third and July fourth event at the park. It is a very big lift, um, and that staff is behind the scenes doing a lot of things, whether it comes to. Uh, getting insurance certificates or trying their damnedest to do it, uh, as well as making sure the park is safe, prepped, and ready for. All of those people, so I just want to give a huge thank you uh and recognition for all of that hard work that CRPD does to help produce that amazing event. Uh, we also have a couple board members that are up for renewing their ethics training, and Brian, Rick, you're on deck for that. Uh, I am super excited to announce that the operation spending plan finished the year by hitting the target by four percent under budget. There were three payrolls in the month of June, but we finished the fiscal year uh really coming close with a very large budget that we have to get that. Accurate and that close, kudos to all of the managers who manages their budgets very tightly. Um, I really appreciate it, it really does help the district in terms of its financial stability. Uh, and our ability to actually possibly go after some other funding sources in the future, if we need to borrow some money for. Facilities or projects, it does help us, so I I really do appreciate all the management of our funds. Uh, as I'm sure the board does as well. Uh, we have some optimized plan, uh. You know, the average meetings coming up, the first one is July twenty-sixth at six thirty, it's the webinar. Uh, we will send out the link for the webinar to the board, so you're more than welcome to attend. Uh, the next one after that is July twenty-eighth at six P M at Prospect Hill Park. And then the last one, August eleven at five P M, Lincoln Village Community Park, in conjunction with the Lincoln Village Community Park Family Swimming. So that should maybe attract some folks as well. Uh, Director Sloan mentioned that the Cassis project is uh now officially applied for through the S V three thirty application process. That S V three thirty application indicates that it is a pro uh, a potential application. Uh, that the city would have to consider, and it would include affordable housing components. Uh, this is considered a new application, there have been other applications on this particular property. Uh, but we are addressing it as it is a new uh opportunity for us to negotiate and. Ask for, in essence, the full land dedication associated with this piece of property, instead of accepting any in lieu. Uh, due to the community feedback that we received in the last application. So the comments were made from our park planning and development staff, they are back to the developer, and we should be hearing back from the developer. Relatively soon, uh, in terms of how that negotiation will go forward. Uh, very exciting news, Hummingbird Park is coming uh really close to being completed. Uh, we are looking at the opening of fall of twenty twenty-three. Uh, it's exciting to see out there, I've been out there a couple times uh in the last couple weeks. Also, uh, update on Gold Rush Park in Rio de Oro, that one is slated to hopefully be completed. Uh, pending any supply chain issues that we may be encountering apparently, so I'll kind of come in pretty soon here. Uh, but we are looking at a uh early twenty twenty-four, but potentially end of twenty twenty-three. Uh, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our amazing Parks and Recreation fellows.
Thank you. All right, community events, obviously, um, you all attended the Fourth of July parade, I just want to thank you all for being there. It meant a lot to um the community, like you all mentioned, I think they really appreciated CRPD being there, it's been about ten years or so. Since we had entered a float into the parade, and what a great year for us to enter a float as our sixty-fifth anniversary is here. So again, thank you for walking with us and being patient, and um we are excited about doing another float next year, so. I do need to to do a little shout out, um, because there were just a few people that actually uh created that float. Uh, Nicole Lowery, who is one of our new recreation supervisors, she really kind of spearheaded it. Along with um Mark Hay, who is one of our park services supervisors, and then Will Hart, who is a seasonal employee, he's the one who um drove the truck. And did a fantastic job, um, there were some other people that obviously helped out, but those are the the three main people. Um, and so I appreciate that, Chase, thank you so much for for getting your team together and creating that flow. And then I I'd be remiss not to echo um what um General Manager Parkin, uh, Patrick Clarkin said was. Um, that the park staff did just an amazing job once again with the Fourth of July. um, that the park staff did just an amazing job once again with the Fourth of July. Um, it was, you know, another, um, good year for, for the Fourth of July, but we had some, you know, some other challenges with, uh, with setting up for, for, for this really large event. And Jim is, and his staff, just every single year, just get it done. And there are people pulling them in a gazillion different directions. Um, I think that, uh, Vice Chair Dantzel and I probably are on the phone every single day for over a week. And so, uh, you know, it's, it goes above and beyond, um, their daily routine. And I just, I appreciate you, Jim, and I appreciate your staff. So thank you for leading them and allowing us to, um, show the community, uh, how great of, uh, community partners we are. So thank you for that. I appreciate that. Um, and we can't wait for next year. Brian, I know that I have that photo with someone. Parks obviously still crazy busy, just doing their thing all summer long. They're, you know, helping put up signs, they're painting parking lots. Um, Director Langen, the Rosemont, uh, Community Park Parking Lot got restripped on Monday. So it is ready to go. So, um, we are very glad that we were able to do that and the RCA, uh, which they are just amazing, uh, you know, group of people. So that is now complete.
Thank you very much.
You bet. So thank you to, to, to Gary Atchison and his staff. We've got some, you know, new park amenities, some, some baseball field boxes out there. Um, and then just your typical, um, you know, parks, uh, you know, routine maintenance throughout, uh, throughout all of our park systems. Working and Communications is busy as usual. Um, just getting out there and making sure that they tell our story. We've got another video in the making. This time it's going to be park planning. So hopefully we'll see that in the next couple of weeks. That'll be exciting. Golf course, even though it is hot out there, they had another record-breaking June, which was fantastic. Um, if you haven't been out to the golf course lately, um, you might want to get out there in the morning because it's a little bit cooler. Um, but the other great thing about the Cordoba Golf Course, um, led by Chase Michelotti was, um, they were fortunate enough to be awarded a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Northern California Golf Association to fund a new instructional program. Um, that is, was created and called The Life Without Limits Through Golf. So, um, this past spring, the golf course began partnering, partnering with units of repulsing of Sacramento and Northern California. And through social interaction and adaptive instruction, Life Without Limits Through Golf provides children and adults with developmental and physical disabilities and their families to golf experience that they have never had before. So, I mean, congratulations to the golf course and a big thank you to Jack Robane and Denise Spass, who are two of our PGA professionals out there. Because in the end, we wouldn't be able to do it without them. And they're, you know, contracted employees, um, you know, instructors with, with the district and they just have such a great passion for this. So Chase, congratulations to you and Daryl and everybody over at the golf course. Um, we will, uh, be happy to spend that twenty-five thousand dollars for our community to have another experience here. So, great job. Really, really great job. In recreation, oh, summer camps are exploding. So another great summer of summer camps. Uh, Cordova Original as well as Camp Cordova. We have a brand new recreation supervisor uh, who is just doing an outstanding job leading his team. So thanks to Matt Zerling and, and his staff for putting on just amazing camps this summer. Uh, the teen adventure group, the tag group's still going strong. We're so excited that that program is taking off and we're able to have kids um, out in the community doing something different than their typical summer activities. So we're looking forward to, to having those activities through the rest of the summer as well as into the fall. Uh, aquatics, can you believe our season's almost halfway over? I feel like it just began. Um, but aquatic swim lessons are off the hook. Uh, there are a ton of swim lessons happening at both Cordoba Community Pool as well as the Lincoln Village Community Pool. Colin Hurst out for doing an outstanding job. We've got lots of people going to our splash pads as well as the White Rock Splash Park. Um, we've got another warm weekend coming up, so our pools will be nice and packed. But it is nice to see Cordova Community Pool back and operational for, for all the programs that are going to be able to take place there. Seniors are still doing many, many programs, doing some selfie events as well at the senior center, um, and doing lunches. I also wanted to update you on a couple of changes, uh, for the twenty-twenty-three calendar events. I included that on page two-thirty-six of your board packet. We have solidified the CRPD's sixty-fifth birthday celebration. It will be on September eighth, which is a Friday. Um, and it's going to start at four-thirty. And it'll go to seven o'clock and we will get those invitations out in probably the next, uh, month or so. And so we're still working on what that celebration is going to, um, entail. But we look forward to it. It's going to be at the Cordova Community Pool. We hope that you all can join us for that sixty-fifth celebration. And then the RCA's annual community celebration is actually going to be on September thirtieth. And so that's Saturday, September thirtieth, from ten A M to two P M. And that's another amazing event that the Rosemont Community puts on in Rosemont Community. And then some, uh, Board of Directors special event invitations. Um, we've already mentioned, um, uh, Director, I mean, General Manager Larkin, um, mentioned all the optimized plan webinars and pop-up events. We do have the Party in the Park this Saturday, which is at Rosemont Community Park. Um, that's going to start at ten A M to one P M. So we hope to see you all out there. And then, um, like I said, we, um, already talked about the optimized plan. So with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. No, I guess you're here by my microphone. Oh, why, thank you. Um, all right. So I guess we will, we'll be moving on to, do we have your informational items or is that you?
Thank you. Item J one is the Articles of Correspondence and Public Outreach. We have three articles, three public hearing notices, one email blast regarding the optimized plan events. I did submit the, uh, nomination paperwork for Alafco for Vice Chair Dantzel. And we are expecting that item to come back to the board with a ballot vote in August. And two newsletters. And then item J two is your calendar.
Thank you. Well, it looks like it might be time for item K, close session.
Thank you. Even though we don't have any public currently on the call, I would just announce, um, for close session, we end the Zoom meeting for all and then restart the Zoom after we reconvene in a second. So we have one item in close session this evening. Item K one is a liability claim pursuant to Calvary and Government Code Section five-four-nine-five-six-point-nine. The claimant is Nancy Cortezzi and the agency claimed against his Cordova Recreation and Park District.
All right, thank you. So we will recess to close session at eight-twenty-four. All right, we'll return for close session at eight, the agents. Um, the board voted unanimously to reject the claim as presented on item K one. So, looks like, uh, after that is item M for adjournment. We will adjourn till the next regular scheduled meeting of Board of Directors. Uh, the Rancho Park District, uh, Cordova Recreation and Park District, uh, is Wednesday, August sixteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six-thirty P M.